I'm gonna join.
All good, right, we'll call the meeting order with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everybody for joining us for the Monday, November third, twenty twenty five, River City Council meeting. We will begin with approving or amended amending the agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda any council member would like to make? Hearing none, I take a motion to approve the agenda as of this.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Larry.
Second.
Thank you, Jay. Motion by Shomer, second by Siderback. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. No deputy tonight, so move to consent agenda. Those items on the council agenda which are considered routine or non-controversial are included as part of the consent agenda. Unless a council member specifically requested an item on the consent agenda be removed and considered separately. Items on the consent agenda are considered under one motion, a second and a vote. Any item removed from the consent agenda shall be placed at the end of general business. Tonight, on the consent agenda, we've got three point one minutes from the October twentieth, twenty twenty five city council meeting. Three point two, approved payment of claims and bills is presented. Three point three, approved resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty six, revoking municipal state aid streets and designating municipal aid state aid streets. Is there anything on consent agenda anybody like to remove and consider separately? Otherwise, I'll take a motion to approve consent agenda.
Mister Mayor, just have a question. Do we have to pull it because of a question, a clarification to Shane?
And why don't you try, see if it, if it's quick, then let's.
I think it's quick. What impact do we have by revoking the uh MSA designation for the roads that we're revoking? Like, what impact does that have on the city?
And at this point, uh really, no, uh, we designate as many, as much available mileage as we can when we have it. Uh, because the more mileage that we have, the more needs we can draw and we get our, our allocation is a factor of our population and our needs. Uh, so whenever we have available mileage, we designate it. But in this case, in order to designate the justal road, we have to remove those two little segments.
Will we ever get those two segments back? Or not necessarily, will they be gone forever? Because you designated them for a reason at one point in time.
Yeah, and so we can uh re-designate them in the future if we think that's uh advantageous. Because as our uh mileage of roads grows, we can designate twenty percent of our total mileage as MSA routes.
Okay.
So as our overall, you know.
Okay.
We add in ten miles, we will be able to designate on it too.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so still looking for a motion to approve consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Jay.
Second.
Thank you, Abe. Motion by Siderback, second by Zanto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Open forum, the public forums intended to afford the public an opportunity to address concerns to the council. The public forum may no longer at thirty minutes in length, each presenter will have no more than five minutes to speak. Topics of discussion are restricted to local governmental topics rather than private or political agendas. The council may discuss but will not take formal action on public forum presentations. Tonight, I've got Claire Holderly signed up for open forum. Claire, if you don't mind stepping to the podium, state your name and address and.
Claire Holderly, one nine six eight five Oak Grove Avenue. I'm here tonight not just as a concerned resident, but as someone who genuinely cares about this community and the people who give their time trying to make it better. Two weeks ago, at the fourth budget workshop, I heard a comment made by Leroy Shomer regarding a citizen advisory group. Let me refresh everyone's memory on what he said. Screw the advisory committee for Christ's sake. We should make up our own minds for what we want to do. Wow, statement was deeply disappointing. The advisory groups are created to give everyday residents a voice. To share their expertise, perspectives, and lived experiences. When an elected official dismisses that input so bluntly. It sends a message that citizen participation doesn't matter. Advisory groups are an obstacles, they're partners. They represent the people you serve. Their recommendations might not always be perfect, but they come from people who care deeply about our community. They volunteer their time, their talents, research and study issues, and show up because they believe their voices matter. We need leaders who listen, even when it's inconvenient, even when it challenges your own voices. Your words can affect public confidence in local government. I urge Mister Shomer and this council to reaffirm your respect for public input and to treat advisory committees as valuable contributors to the decision-making process. Because when you shut out the public, you lose something that's really hard to get back, and that's trust. Thank you.
Alright, anybody else for open forum tonight? Seeing none, we'll close open forum and move on to presentations. Five point one, Stonebridge Estates Evaluation of Alternatives Report, Engineer Nelson.
Thank you, Mister Mayor and Council. Uh, the token, I'd just like to kind of uh run through the report. So I'm just gonna share on my screen uh as we talk about various sections. Uh, so I'll kind of skip the background with the exception of uh our, our compliance dates or important dates we have coming ahead. So uh by March first of twenty twenty seven, we are required to submit a facility plan for our selected alternative. Uh, which means that sometime uh probably in mid twenty twenty six, uh, we're, that's when we're gonna ask our council to really narrow down on uh a selection. So tonight, it's just more of a discussion, uh listening to the information that I've uh put together and then from there deciding what other, what other information is necessary uh to make this decision. Uh, and move on. So uh, so moving on from there, uh, our option one would be the Lakeville sewer connection. You've all received this uh in the very manner uh previously, but this option uh would uh consist of installing a new lift station at the Stonebridge Estates development. And then installing roughly two miles of force main uh into the city of Lakeville and discharging the sanitary sewer into the metropolitan system. As you've uh, you already know, the estimated cost for option one is two point three million. And and really what we do with this report will provide some, a little bit more financial analysis uh to determine uh on a twenty year timeframe and on a fifty year timeframe uh, the, the different life cycle costs of these stuff. So uh, so moving on now to section three point four of the report. So in addition to the construction cost, we would also have access charges. So these access charges uh were taken right from the Lakeville uh fee schedule and then also the Met Council, their sack procedure manual. Um, so we would have basically connection charges of roughly a hundred and sixteen thousand, uh that would go into overall cost of that. Uh, section three point five uh is an estimate of operation maintenance cost. And uh, so the sanitary sewer usage chart would be based on the actual flow. Uh, it's five dollars and sixty-two cents per thousand gallons. Uh, and then we have estimated city administrative costs and then really beyond that, it's just uh uh electricity and then some pumping. So about thirty thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars on an annual basis uh for operation of this uh what we call the Lakeville sewer connection. Uh, and then moving on to section three point six, the future replacement cost. So with the, with the lift station option, there really, this, this option really doesn't have a lot of uh parts that were out. We have, it would have two pumps and uh those pumps would have a expected life of right around twenty-five years. Uh, they do occasionally uh remove the pumps and rebuild them, and that would be included in the, the previous maintenance cost. Uh, so really, in the twenty year time horizon, we wouldn't anticipate any major replacements for this option. Uh, all the replacements would be twenty-five years or beyond and the, the cost estimates uh for those replacements are listed in table three point six. Uh, so uh now moving to section three point seven. Uh, so this is a twenty year lifecycle cost analysis, and I actually debated on whether or not to keep this in because it's a little bit confusing the way this report is set up. Uh, but the twenty year lifecycle cost analysis, the best way I can explain it, it just assumes that we cut it off at twenty years. So you ignore uh anything that, that might happen uh after twenty years. Uh, so we have our initial cost, which includes the construction cost uh and the access charges. Uh, we estimate an annual cost of a bond uh for financing those initial charges uh using a five percent interest rate. Uh, and then our thirty thousand four hundred eighty-four estimated operation and maintenance cost. Um, and then again, since we cut this off at a twenty year time period, uh, we, we had no uh estimate, estimated capitalized future replacement cost. But uh estimated annual cost of two hundred and twenty-six thousand seven hundred eighty-eight, so much, much higher uh than we're gonna see with the other option for the first twenty years.
Would that be spread into the thirty-two homes?
Mm-hmm.
So about seven grand a year in expense?
Correct. Uh, so now if we move into option three point eight, or I'm sorry, section three point eight. Uh, so now I'm looking at a longer time horizon because really we, we all know that the lift station option is more expensive. More state, more expensive upfront, but really the question is, how long will it take or what kind of savings can we recognize uh after that initial infrastructure cost is paid off? Um, and so uh here we have in section three point eight, our estimated replacement cost. So pumps every twenty-five years, uh the driveway every fifteen thou, or sorry, every twenty-five years, fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, replacing the control panel every twenty-five years. Uh, and maybe at year fifty, we would rehabilitate the wet well. That's, I, I'm not even sure that would be necessary, but uh occasionally, you know, at fifty years old, you have to do some, some work to these kind of systems. Now, so with that, that gives us a capitalized cost, I did use in that five percent uh discount rate of nineteen thousand five hundred and nine dollars uh per year. Um, and so what I did next is I just separated this again until the first twenty years and the next twenty years. So during the first twenty years, uh taking those future replacement costs now of the nineteen thousand five oh nine per year and adding those in. Uh, during the first two years, our first twenty years, uh, you have a capitalized cost of two hundred and four and six thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Uh, but then really after that initial, uh, those initial improvements we paid up, this is where the, the city and or the residents would start to recognize savings. Uh, and, and for the, each year thereafter, after the twenty years, uh, the total cost would be forty-nine thousand nine ninety-three.
Difference.
So moving on to uh section four, this is the CSTS upgrades. Uh, this project, we actually bid in twenty twenty-four, so these project costs are based on the bid prices. They, you know, they could have uh went up slightly since we bid it, but uh for purposes of this analysis, I just use the bid prices. Moving on to section four point two, our annual operation maintenance cost, I actually took these numbers right from our twenty twenty-six budget, so uh they should be good. And, you know, with the, our normal operation maintenance, we have our service provider costs, city administrative costs, uh repairs and maintenance, septic pumping, and then the cost of electricity. So uh approximately fifty-five thousand dollars per year. Uh, and then for the future replacement cost, uh we have identified several items uh that uh may or will require replacement in the future. Uh, the textiles, those are inside the AX one hundred units, uh that's twenty-year life. The lids is a twenty-five-year life, uh the driveway twenty-five years, uh replacing the control panel twenty-five years. The AX one hundreds, those are, have a forty-year life. Um, and then the mounds, we're estimating forty years of life. And then again, rehab concrete tanks at fifty years. So this option is just a little bit different in the first twenty-year time period because we do have some things that are a, almost approaching uh the end of their life, like the driveway is uh probably gonna have to be replaced within the next five years. Uh, so we had, we did have some minor costs uh in this option uh or if we cut it off at that twenty-year time period. So uh for, for the upgrade to the CSTS, looking at cutting it off at twenty years, we had a uh in the annual cost of a hundred and twenty-seven nine ninety-three. And again, that's compared to the Lakeville sewer connection was two twenty-six seven eighty-eight. So during that first twenty years, it's exactly what we expected. The more expensive option costs more. Uh, but then when we look at this longer timeframe, uh, you know, the, with the upgrades of the CSTS option. As the system ages, we expect more things to fail. So right now, we have about an eight hundred thousand dollar uh repair that's necessary. And in the future, we expect, there's, there's three other AX one hundreds, so we expect those will have to be replaced. The mounds, you know, the mounds could last longer, uh but using a uh, a time, estimated time of or service life of forty years, uh and, and that results, all the all of the uh items that would have to be replaced on a capitalized, again, a five percent discount rate is a eighty thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars uh annual cost. So, again, so when you, when you're thinking about those um those items that may have to be replaced in the future and bringing them back to a current value, the capitalized cost, now that brings that uh the, the, the cost from zero twenty years to two hundred and six thousand. So we were at two forty, two hundred and forty.
Six.
Six.
For the sewer connection.
For the sewer connection. And now if you're looking at that same fifty-year time period during the first twenty years, it would be two hundred and six thousand for the upgrades of CSTS. So it's, again, I think it's just uh the upgrade to CSTS would just kind of backload it. We're expecting all those uh improvements that occur later on in the system's life. But then I think here is that the next uh summary is where you really start to see the savings. So with the uh upgrade to CSTS option, years twenty-one and beyond, the capitalized cost would be one thirty-five nine oh five. And that's compared to the Lakeville sewer option of roughly fifty thousand. So uh after, you know, beyond that twenty-one years, this, the upgrade to the, to current system would be roughly two and a half times, two point three times of the, the cost of the Lakeville sewer connection. Okay, so with that, uh I mean, I just, in the summary, we just uh kind of summarized it basically um stake re-stating what I have already said tonight, uh, a couple of other things that are of note. Uh, so the, right now, the CSTS system sits on about seven acres. Uh, and so if that, that site would no longer use for sewer treatment, it could potentially have a, a different use. Uh, so that's, you know, we really didn't put a number of that or a value on that, but it's something to consider. Uh, the other option, or the other thing to consider is uh, the two point three million dollars for the Lakeville sewer connection uh only included the lift station, the force main, and the connection to the, the city of Lakeville. It didn't include uh removing the existing septic tanks. Well, the existing septic tanks would not have to be removed. Uh, but at that point, they were really no longer serve kind of a, a city function. So uh we assume that moving forward, the residents will either just pump those on their own, if they chose to keep them. But they could also retrofit their house, have like a internal grinder pump, connect to the two-inch force main, or remove the uh remove the septic system altogether, I'm sorry, the septic tank altogether, and replace it with like a small uh grinder pump station.
Is that because the elevations would not permit gravity drain?
Yeah, so, so I'll, I'll uh, the entire neighborhood's on a pressurized system.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and so from the, it gravity flows to their septic tanks. And then there's a pump tank, and from the, the pump tank gets pressurized a little too.
Okay.
So it's, it would, it would not gravity drain.
So minus tearing up all the streets and potentially even studying whether the elevations would even work, it would still have to be a pressurized system.
Right.
Yeah.
So um
We follow, Shane, if we went that route with Lakeville, uh would the Met Council then require us density calcs then in the southern half of our city?
Yeah, so the, it's a great question. Also, our marker, uh, the, uh, from my experience, the Met Council includes any sewered areas. Uh, and for this development, there are currently thirty-two homes on sixty-eight acres. So that would affect our density calculations.
They would require us to get three and a half for, in those sixty-eight acres?
Well, more than, more.
Or use it up somewhere else.
Or, or, or find it somewhere else.
Find it somewhere else.
That's what it, yeah, that's what I.
That seven acres that is current, where the current site is, if you decommission that and remove those tanks, is that acceptable for additional homes or is it something that is probably not?
Uh, I, I would say that would be a question that we'd have to evaluate. Uh, my understanding is when Stonebridge, Stonebridge Estates was originally approved, you know, it was an open space development.
Right.
Territory.
Green space.
Where they have to have a certain amount of open space.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so I don't know if it would meet our zoning requirements.
Sure.
And then in addition, it'd be a, a metropolitan council report or question.
Yeah.
Whether or not they would allow additional home, because that is, that is not a, uh, it's not within the, the Musa district or some condition.
Right.
And uh they would keep their wells, their water, their water would stay on wells then? They're only talking sewer.
On a shared well.
They're on a shared well.
And this, yeah. Their, their well may not be able to support additional homes anyways.
Would, um, I know Lakeville hasn't made a decision or haven't even addressed this. Do we know if they have capacity though? Or didn't we ask that question?
Yeah, we did reach out to them. Uh, I don't have the exact date, but you know, it was a year, year and a half ago uh in regards to this connection, and they, they stated that they didn't have capacity. So that was an informal.
Right.
Staff.
They, they would have to analyze.
Right. And if the city council is interested in further pursuing this option, at some point, we'd wanna make a formal request to the city of Lakeville uh and actually have the city council consider it.
Couple of questions. If you want any questions, yeah. Okay, sure. Uh, this is one of the CSTS and four different CSTS systems. I think we talked once, at one time possibly about using the force main for others, since this is, I mean, one of the things to look at it is, it's a permanent solution versus doing the repairs, doing the option two, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so if we were to uh, if some of the other CSTS systems were to drop into this force main, wouldn't that also lower the cost of connection?
It, yeah, yeah, Council of Siderback, it, it would. Um, it's, uh, I feel like uh adding that into the report just increasing the complexity.
Yep.
Uh, I, I think it's more likely that monorail height self-passage could connect. Um, but I, I don't think that the force main uh would accept like the territory development if we didn't design for it upfront. So, so with the force main, uh, we're gonna, when we design it, we, we try to have a minimum cleaning velocity of two feet per second when the pumps turn on. Um, and so if we get too big of a pipe, it just, it, it moves too slow and it doesn't clean itself out or require way more maintenance. Uh, so we could upsize the pipe, but then it would have maintenance problems, and you wouldn't wanna upsize it just for a major or a what-if. Um, it, it's especially because you're talking roughly sixty homes, monorails, self-passage at Stonebridge, and then territories way more. And so it would be, you know, it would require a much larger pipe. Um, but I think we could uh maybe upsize it just one pipe size and still likely have acceptable uh velocities and really not incur that much additional cost for the.
For the two.
Right, to, to, to make it, to, to give ourselves the option of connecting monorail height self-passage into in the future.
Wouldn't then doing that wind up being a more economical solution in the long run? Uh, compare, compared comparatively, and then also a permanent solution versus still having the ongoing issues with uh, with these and the maintenance and repairs, et cetera.
Yeah, I, I think, I think what we found out by completing this analysis, so that the first twenty years, the, you know, this option is just more expensive. But then if you look beyond that, that twenty-year timeframe, uh
Starts getting better.
It starts getting a lot better.
And if we add, if we added or, or added the option of adding some of these other, two of the other CS, the other two, two CSTS, not consider the territories, which doesn't seem to have a problem anyway. It might, it might actually make a lot of sense to go that route, right, and make for all of those residents as well. Right?
Yeah, I, I don't disagree.
Okay.
Um, you know, it is, it is a bigger upfront cost, and that's what makes it, I think, difficult. And, and that's where, you know, for, for this analysis, uh, we, we utilize a twenty-year timeframe. Is twenty-year the right timeframe? I don't think, would we want to look at a thirty-year timeframe? Um, you know, and paying off a bond over a longer period of time. Um, you know, that's something that we could consider. We could uh, you know, we could look at some rate structures, some rate assessment structures, uh things like that, but I don't know that we would um you know, at this time, Stonebridge is the only, you know, that has the compliance schedule.
Yeah.
The other two don't, don't need it yet, but they.
And we just replaced one.
Correct.
So that's probably a good twenty years before that one's gonna be.
Yeah. Okay, well, something to think about.
So you say that you're gonna bring this back to us then sometime next year prior to need to make a decision on something to present to MPCA, correct?
Uh, yeah, Mister Mayor. So I, I think right now, I just wanted to, to give the initial presentation to the city council, uh have you start thinking about it. Uh, think about what additional information we should gather. Uh, and then probably on the next episode to reach out to the residents and bring it to them and get their feedback.
Yeah.
Um, and so maybe we'll just put a tickler uh on the calendar for uh January or something like that, so it doesn't get too far away from us.
Yep. Perfect.
Yeah, two questions. Is it a for sure Met Council is going to take that into account? Cause my calculation of three, which it was, and now it's three point three, if I.
Yeah.
Three point five, yeah.
We're gonna be short a hundred and seventy-two for that sixty-eight acres. So I think that's a pretty big number now, where I put a hundred and seventy-two more on the north side for this purpose. Cause even if we can use those seven acres, we're not gonna put a hundred and seventy-two there. That's not gonna fly, right? So it's all gonna go up on the north side. So I think that's my first question, is, is it for sure or is it a, we think?
It's kind of an emergency retrofit, if you look at it.
Yeah, I mean, in my experience.
Might be achievable.
They look at the sewered area. Um, and so this would be, this would become a sewered area connected to the Met Council system. So I think it's very likely unless there is some kind of policy change uh to that council. We could reach out and verify, you know, I'd be happy to do that.
Might wanna do that.
I think that'd be a good piece of information to have.
Yeah. I think an argument on that though is just that, and this is specifically for certain units or residences that are there. So you're not really looking at, you're not really looking at adding and opening an area that's developable. You know, it's, it's just because it would, it would be a finite number of connections to it.
What was your other question?
My other question is, you know, as we were talking through budget and we're talking about now versus later, right? So I'm a, I'm a homeowner in Stonebridge. What's the likelihood of me living there for over twenty years, twenty-five years? Um, so I think we need to address also, look at historically, how many times have we tried to fix this in the past and how many times? So I think we need to address also, look at historically, how many times have we tried to fix this in the past and how many times have we had it not? Succeed. So I'm not sure if we've got that data or that detail, because at some point in time we would need to probably go to Stonebridge and have that dialogue with them to. To do that. So I'm not sure if we have that data. Because even if we went with option two, did we solve the problem or are we back here again a couple of years talking about the issue? So I'm not sure. It's more of a statement or maybe it's a question of do we have that data to, to help present as we talk about this?
I think we do because we've been through that the last couple of times we've done presentations on this with the residents. We've had that. I think we have some slides that we've given, delivered to them before.
How many times we tried to solve it and have it solved?
Mostly just the one time really, right?
Yeah, twenty seventeen, we.
We put the, the.
Call it a Band-Aid. I mean, we did a project to try to improve the.
Nitrites.
You're right.
Yeah.
Okay, and, okay, so I think as we, just maybe some of. Put a pin in that because we need to say that this could solve our issue. Or are we, you know, are we putting another Band-Aid on it and we're back here eight years later? It's not a twenty year, but it's an eight year.
In fairness, that's what the, the residents have said and when they, when we've had them in here before is, is. We spend nine hundred thousand dollars, probably a million by the time it actually happens. Is that, how long of a solution is that for?
Right.
And, and that's where, that's where you have to make the decision on, you know, okay, you comfortable with a million dollars? And, and taking a guess, more than a guess, an educated guess, you have an engineer design a system, you'd think it, you know, a, a person, you know, SD consulting, that's what they do. They should understand that piece. So it's more than a guess. I shouldn't, shouldn't use guess as the word to it, but you're right. I mean, in the future. Conditions could change there and, and something could happen again inside that twenty years where you were fighting the same problem again. Leroy, you had something?
Oh, I just, the system's like fifteen years old, sixteen?
Twenty?
Yeah, probably closer to twenty.
Twenty?
So interesting. So a lot of these numbers, when you talk about then the future replacements and the life expectancy. Through some of those components, you're halfway through already.
Yeah, I think, I think you have between A and B, you have one's permanent solution. Right? So any of the, any of the infrastructure costs that go into that in the future are borne basically by the, by the Met Council system.
That's the thing about this. So, so we're already, if we, if we think we're about twenty years, textiles, eight eighteen thousand already at that time. You're almost ready to replace the lids that exist, the driveway, as you mentioned before. Two of the AX one hundreds that are there are halfway through their life. The mounds are halfway through their life. Control panel, which would get replaced in this upgrade is halfway through its life. The concrete tanks are almost halfway through their life. All things to consider.
Yeah, really the, the most concerning to me would be the, the mounds and, you know, we have. One backup mound site for each of the mounds. We don't have two, so, you know, those mounds. Do fail at, at some point. We don't, these, these systems just haven't been around for fifty years, so we don't have a lot of. Great data and, you know, do they actually last fifty years, sixty years? It's just kind of a speculation on what their life will be.
Yeah, and I think I, you know. Remember back listening to the operator talk about the way he's operating to try to bring the nitrates down to. Keep rotating, keep rotating around, but, but adding more circulation through some of the mounds and some of those pieces that might be taking life off of some of them even. So.
Well, the other thing you have to consider, I mean, honestly, is, is that. One is, one is a solution and it's not going to, we're not, it's not going to be a nitrate problem anymore after that. The other one, we still have to maintain a level of nitrates. We don't know a hundred percent that this, that everything works. So, you know, and or if things get aged out, we wind up back in the same problem in the future on it. Yeah, you know, that's again, I just, I like, I like permanent solutions.
The one thing we have to keep in mind though, we're saddling a hundred, now my calculation of three point three is a hundred and ninety-two.
I know.
High density.
Units.
I mean, that's what we're gonna have to.
Yeah, unless you can do something with the seven acres.
And what?
High density.
I don't think you're gonna get, you're not gonna, so, so again, I think, again, all these things are conceptual things that we need to consider as we move through the project and. And making the decision on which way we're gonna go.
Yeah, we don't want to use it down here.
Yeah.
I, I think we do need to have that discussion with the, the council and maybe I can.
Yeah.
I thought I saw a survey or some feedback from that council asking for feedback again on the twenty fifty plan set. Accurate?
I don't recall seeing, they, there was, they've asked for feedback on things all the time.
Okay.
But I think it was, they do, right? I mean, there's, there's emails come out all the time that say, hey, give us feedback about this or that or things that just don't matter.
Is that three point three set in stone?
I think it's three point five.
Three and a half?
Yeah, so your math is even, it's, you know, yeah, you need over two hundred and eighty.
Two hundred and forty.
Yeah.
With that, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Zanto, I, I don't know that the Met Council would, would include, so I, I included the entire development, which includes the open space.
Space.
And the Met Council would likely exclude the open spaces. So there's a seven acres where there's.
The current site.
Current site, and then there's a bunch of wetlands that have boardwalks and stuff through them.
Right.
And so they would likely exclude that and only, and only include the actual connected homes. But yeah, we could.
So that changes that quite a bit.
Right.
Having back to the amendment.
All right, anything else? So again, we'll hear, we'll have this back up again, you know, early next year. All right, we'll move into general business, general business seven point one, resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-four. Approving a conditional use permit to allow an accessory structure that exceeds the height of the primary dwelling at eight five five five, one hundred seventy-fifth street east. Welcome back Planner Strickler.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy to be back. Yes, as the mayor stated, the application on your agenda this evening is a conditional use permit. For the property owner to add a thirty-five hundred square foot accessory structure. That would exceed the height of the primary dwelling. The primary dwelling is a ranch style home. It's a single story. And the city's code does allow for a higher structure than the primary. If it meets, you know, the conditional use permit requirements, which is section two dash six dash one of the code, we have our staff. Analysis of whether, you know, staff does find that this application meets those criteria. That's on page thirty-six of your packet with our annotations. But the planning commission agreed and unanimously voted for recommendation of approval. With two conditions, staff did add one more in the midst of conversations with the applicant and the planning commission. With the use kind of being more, not just storage, which was how it was initially presented to staff, but also that horse stable equestrian use and. At this time, they wouldn't go over the animal units and that rule, but we did add a condition just addressing that to ensure that they don't. Go over the density and they're aware of what that rule is and that, that just wouldn't be, they wouldn't be able to go over that, so.
And they're gonna abide by that?
Yep, at this time, they're currently storing, they have some stable area on the property. They just want more space for their horses to be able to move around. So they're not planning on adding any more additional animal units. Yeah. And they did receive two letters of support from surrounding neighbors that were read at the planning commission meeting, so.
So this is not a commercial entity?
No, this is a, this would fit under your use of private stables. It's totally.
They're not gonna make any money by helping other people's horses.
No, yeah, correct. That is correct.
Because, because the owner is Empire State LLC. That's who owns that property. They know it in the obvious.
Yeah, I mean.
It sounds like that's a horse business.
I know that their plan is not just horses for the building. They do, are planning on, they said like seasonal storage, like boats, things like that would also be in that building. So I, I don't think they're not planning on having the whole thing be horses and yet they. We specifically had correspondence and asked them about that and it's all for their own personal.
So if they break, it's, they're gonna be committing to what we put in it.
Correct.
And if they break it, we can pull the.
Exactly. Yeah, because they'd have to follow under what's approved in the resolution. If there's a condition that the council feels they want to add to address that, certainly can. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Leroy.
Neither one of their driveways meet the, oh, oh, city standards.
Okay.
So they'd have to put in new culverts currently full of. Flooded, waters running over the road, so. On both driveways.
We can ensure that when they go through the building permit process for that. Yeah, I think.
They have three driveways?
Yeah, they have two. I thought we only.
They get three. Yeah.
Yeah, there's like three right now.
Some of, some of those were legacy things before that that was a thing.
Drive through the ditch long on a bill that looks like a driveway.
And, and if you look back at the aerial photos from in time, it's been there, all three of them been there for a really long time, so. Yeah. Any other questions, comments? Okay, otherwise I would be happy to take a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Leroy?
With a citation. With the condition.
With the conditions, yeah, by staff, right?
Correct.
Yep, okay. Motion by Shomar, second by Satterback, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Very none, motion passes. Move on to seven point two, consider RFQ for general planning services and Ms. Fetter Jalinski.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So in front of you is the proposed RFQ for general planning services. This is, was taken from a couple of different general planning services that were found. It would be issued starting tomorrow, looking for about thirty days. I have this going for three years. That can be adjusted if you prefer. Interviews I have would be taking place in the month of December. That is just based because of the holiday. Again, we can adjust that, make that longer or shorter based on your discretion and schedules. Again, this is just for planning services, not for the, for the comp plan and we can. Have the same, same company do the comp plan or a different company. And Pete's firm has looked this over and did give us blessings, so I can take questions regarding this. Or, or suggestions for. For changing any, anything within the RFQ.
Perfect. Thank you, Steve. Council, questions, comments?
Uh, one question. So this is just for the general planning. When would we see the twenty fifth?
I'm, I'm working on that and I'm probably.
Can we ask them to apply the bolts and can we put them bolts out the bid? So they, so each entity applies the bolt, we'd like them to.
I think it's up to them, right? I mean, when you put out two different RFQs, right? Some people may not want to, right?
Like at the same.
At the same time, right? It don't have to be concurrent.
But they might give us a break on one if they know that another one's coming on. That's the only thing. We'll give you.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Three-year term. It's very reason why we wouldn't do five. I think in something like planning, it's something that you, it takes a little time to get into and, and learn. You know, your system and your ordinances that I don't know that it's effective to swap.
I'm okay with five as long as there's like some cushy type of language that says we can get out if they do certain things or.
No problem.
Yeah, I think there's always that, something we always will do in a contract, right? For performance or not fill in, right? But I just don't want to. Go through this every three years and, and have the potential to change that up because it also costs us money every time we do that. Okay, well, if you guys don't have any other questions or comments on this, I'd be happy to take a motion to approve this so that Steve can get this out.
I'll approve with the change of five instead of three.
Motion to, motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Zanto, second by Marker to approve the RFQ for general planning services with the one change from a three-year term to a five-year term. All in favor say aye. Aye, anybody opposed? Very none, motion passes. Next up, seven point three, resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-five, a resolution approving the transfer from the general fund to the capital improvement fund. In the amount of one million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. Finance Director Iverson.
Yes, Mayor and Council. At our May twenty twenty-four meeting. At your May twenty twenty twenty-four council meeting, a transfer has been closed out the road and bridge to the general fund. That fund was closed out as it was a fund used by the township for road projects and maintenance. As a city, the road and bridge fund is not used and items are budgeted in general fund or a capital fund. The balance in the road and bridge fund was held as committed or assigned for roads and when transferred to the general fund, it was transferred as unassigned. Townships typically budget both the operating capital expenses for road maintenance and a fund called road and bridge. In the audit reports, this would be explained as road maintenance and snowplow, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it was all operating and it wasn't intended to be. Capital expenditures from an audit point of view would also be considered road maintenance and described that way. Just like if you would be doing, you know, your roof or you'd be replacing carpet in your house or you remodel your kitchen. Some of those would add value to your house, other would just be maintenance. So when we look at capital funds and the future maintenance cost, it was discussed this year when we were doing the budget to transfer this money back to the capital improvement fund. So staff researched the road and bridge fund. And so I went back and I looked through your capital plans and I happened to find twenty twenty-three long range plan that you did. And I found that most of the operating expenditures were usually spent over the years as budgeted, except for, you know, things like snow plowing and unforeseen things, you know, if there was a major repair or something. Emergency road repair, you know, snow plowing depending upon, you know, if it was a snowy year or if it was a dry year. And in twenty-three, I found the budget cycle that the road and bridge fund and it included both operating expenses and the capital improvements such as the micro-surfacing of the roads. There was listed in that, all of the streets of the city had been listed in there and when their micro-surfacing should be done and that will all put into that plan. The balance that was in the fund was built up for the micro-surfacing that was planned because that is what the capital cost of the road and bridge fund was. The fund balance at the end of twenty twenty-three was used. And it was one, one million. Wait a minute, they, at the end of twenty-one, the fund balance was one million, three hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars. And then you had projected road projects from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three being four million, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, sixty-eight dollars, and that was micro-surfacing. And so according, land projects from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-seven in that same plan were two million, six hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six of that amount. Those were based off of the projections based on the various roads and the timing of when it was expected that those roads would need to be resurfaced and that was a, a ten-year plan. The transfer proposed for the general fund will leave the, still leave the general fund balance at fifty-one point seven percent, which is within your budget. Policy and it's a good balance as your fund reserves. And so that's, I was asked at the budget workshop to bring this forward at a council meeting to approve the transfer in twenty twenty-five. So if there's any questions.
Okay, council members, questions or comments? Good job. Okay. Somebody ready to make a motion to approve it then?
So moved.
Thank you, Jake.
I'll second.
Thank you, Leroy. Motion by Satterback, second by Shomar to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-five. A resolution approving the transfer from the general fund to the capital improvement fund in the amount of one million, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and sets three hundred and thirty-five, seven ninety-four dollars. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes four to one. Moving to item seven point four, consider monthly council workshops. I believe this one is council member Zanto's item.
Yeah, it is. In the past, we've been talking quite a bit about two major topics, one being sewer, water and sewer, and the other being government center and. Government city, whatever, you know what I'm saying? We have these come in, we have the little discussion when they fall off the plate, right? Until the next, whenever that comes up. In conversations with current and past Lakeville. City Council Mayor, they've talked about having, and I just noted that as well, having monthly workshop meetings. And I think that not every time they have enough to talk about it, but I think it'd be, make a lot of sense to have these monthly workshop meetings to have these kinds of discussions so they don't fall off the plate. These monthly workshop meetings, to have these kinds of discussions, so they don't fall off the plate. Um, I propose having them, uh, one time a month, uh, right before, so it's an hour right before. Um, it's not more time, uh, for anyone's nights, but allows us to have those types of conversations. Um, I think that'd be a really good use of our time and not have things just kind of never get talked about, and we just take the can down. So I propose, um, I don't care if it's first or second, uh, council meeting, but giving it up from five to six.
I don't think that's a good idea, I think, you know, there's all kinds of opportunities for different discussions. Like the topic we talked about with the CSTS tonight, that, that is an opportunity to have a, a, you know, discuss a lot of the things we talked about, the questions that we had. And pieces like that, I think as we build out next year's calendar, I think that would be appropriate to schedule one. I think what, what I would ask is then, like, uh, as we build out our agendas. One should maybe be a heavier council agenda than the other, to maybe offset some of the discussion, I don't know, I'm just brainstorming, right? How do we, how do we make sure we, but, but if we're ending that session anyways, right, it doesn't really matter.
Yeah, it just got a hour, it's a hundred set time.
I think as we build out the next year's calendar, I think, Steve, I think that would be appropriate to have on next year's council calendar.
Uh, I know for a fact, Lakeville just has it, I think it's the second.
Yeah.
Meeting enough, but.
The second seems fine.
So.
And it's a separate workshop from the second meeting of the month.
Correct.
It would be just like tonight, though, right, we did our budget workshop meeting, we ended that right before six o'clock, and then we was.
I actually think Lakeville has a separate night, so they've got three nights, three weeks of a month, but I'd say.
So.
For us, start with an hour, and if we need to adjust it, we can, but I really think.
Prior, prior Lake does one before every one of their council meetings. They, they start at five o'clock, they go for an hour and a half, almost two hours, um, and then they go right into their council meeting at seven o'clock. And somebody, and they bring in dinner for everybody, just because they're keeping them right through that time, I. But they do that both, both, for both their council meetings every month.
Yeah.
Dinner meeting. No, I think that's a, a, would be a great thing to put on next year's council calendar. You know, I think the motion, the motion would be was when the council calendar comes out.
Yeah.
To pa- approve the council calendar.
Okay, so.
I think the direction that Steve is, is to bring the proposed council calendar with it on the second one, and we'll prove it at that point. Cool, all right, anything else on that? No, all right, sounds good, move to item number eight, staff and council member reports, I will start with Attorney Michael. Nothing. Claire? Steve, you have an item?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, um, I did include in the packet, the handout that was handed out at the. Uh, meeting on Tu- Tuesday last week, um, the, uh, Senate bonding, uh, tour came by the city. And they, they invited us to tour the. Um, they came, they came to Credit River, we submitted a bonding application for, um, sewer and water for country court. To bring in sewer and water for the country court neighborhood, and, um, we. We invited them to take a look at the neighborhood, unfortunately, it was raining, um, and so they weren't able to get off the tour bus. Um, but we included the handout, um, that we gave to them, which we put in the packet. Uh, we're working on updating our city website for, for that, um, we'll include it on the website when we. When we do that, um, but we include it in the packet, um, it's also, there's hard copies here at City Hall too, if you want to take one on the way out. Um, but yeah, it was a, a good question and answer session with, with the Senate Committee, and, um. Yeah, if anyone wants, uh, the, the council member Markert and Siderback and Mayor were there that day, along with, um. Shane and, and myself and, uh, Emily from, from MSA, who, who's not here tonight, but, um. Uh, there's about twenty, twenty members from the Senate and their staff, and a couple extra members of, of the House. That, that showed up as well, and, uh, our, our lobbyists from, from Scott County, and, um. Uh, it was a, it was a good turnout, so.
Agreed. Have anything?
Leroy?
No, no. Jake?
To Bill?
No, can I, can we get an update from Steve maybe on the ditch four? Because there was a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and they were concerned about making the repairs that we thought they were gonna make. Where are we with that?
Sure, so, um, the, the county did not approve the transfer of ditch four to the city. Um, I did hear from county staff today. Um, they, uh, I don't, I don't know anything more than that, um, they're meeting as staff. Uh, the, the county board asked them for more information, they're gathering more information, um, the county board is gonna meet. Uh, I think it's seventeenth of November, I believe. Uh, to meet again, to get that information from staff, they're putting a performa together for the county board, just to see what assessments are gonna look like. Um, just based on. Um. If, if the county decided to do different projects. How much that would, how it would look like to the current assessed properties, um, or benefiting properties, what that would look like for. For the different type of projects that, that they're looking at. Um, and whether or not the county board, I guess, is going to, um, decide to do any of those projects or not, and. And whether they'll, they'll decide to do them.
The, I listened to the meeting, the question I would have is that, they said, well, we have to do the Beaver Dam thing, because there was a complaint lodged, what didn't we? And like, do we have to do a complaint while they, about the other things they were gonna do?
Those, those complaints in there, those were already complained about also, so.
Then how can they?
I'm, 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 I think they were misunderstood that, because those were, those were also complained about buyer too. Which, which Mr. Bull went to the county board at the open meeting and complained about that several times too. And they went out to his property and viewed it, so.
So they understand that they, they kind of like, didn't remember that?
I, I, I'm wondering, yeah. Yeah, so we won't know more until after, I think, the November meeting, county board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Let's.
Sue anything? Shane?
Uh, just one thing, I'm still trying to get a hundred and seventy street striped. Uh, I talked to Dale of Aztec on the third day of last week, he said he calls the striper, he has a subcontractor, he's gonna strike me. He said he calls him every day, and hopefully this week, so.
Okay.
Fingers crossed.
Perfect, sounds good. Linda, anything?
Yes, um, I remember it has two school elections tomorrow, get out and vote.
Perfect.
And the voting locations are precinct two here?
Precinct two here.
Precinct one?
Is that clearly Lake?
Okay.
Okay.
So if you don't know, Lakeville is, is two.
Two.
Here, yes.
Yeah, is that clear?
Yep.
Thank you.
Perfect, awesome. All right, with that, uh, we'll end staff member council updates. Um, just at this point, uh, the council's gonna take a short recess and then be entering into a closed session pursuant to Minnesota statute. Thirteen D dash zero five subdivision three A to conduct performance evaluation of the city administrator. That being said, you don't have to go home, but you can't stay here. So we'll take a quick five minutes and reconvene for a closed session at, uh, at five after seven.